Sure, okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Easton School Committee meeting of Thursday, December 25th, 2024. This meeting is being offered in a hybrid format where attendance by committee members may be remote and remote attendance shall count toward quorum. This evening, we actually don't have any voting members attending remotely, so all voting members are present in the Simmons Lecture Hall. We have Kelly Persio, Nancy DeLuca, Lauren Loomis, Jennifer Starr, and our student representative, Margaret Memmer, who's going to introduce a colleague of hers.
So our student advisory board to the school committee is composed of five students. There's junior Veronica Shinoi, sophomore Lea Vora, freshman Brendan Nolan, and here with us today, senior Franklin Chen. Franklin specifically works with Oliver Ames and will be updating us on that later. As of now, we hope to continue to get more student representation during the meetings by adding other students from the board.
Thank you, and welcome Franklin. This meeting is open to the public. Members of the public who are attending in person may offer comment during our public comment period, which is later in the agenda. If we have any members of the public who wish to speak at that time, I can go over other parameters, but please note that you will need to state your name and address before you begin your comments. And with that, the meeting is called to order at 6:09 PM. Thank you for your patience on our technical delay. We can move on to the first item on the agenda, which is a quick one, a vote to approve our minutes from the November 14th, 2024, regular meeting. And so, any questions, comments, or edits from committee members?
I just found a few misspells, so I'll get in touch with Lena. It doesn't affect the message, right?
Okay, okay. Anything else?
No, this was an impressive capture.
Yes. Yes, I think we had seven, nine pages of very, very detailed notes from our last meeting, so thank you to our secretary for doing such a wonderful job with this set of minutes. All right, so with that, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from November 14th with noted edits?
November 14th.
Sorry, what did I say?
September.
Okay, November 14th with noted typographical edits to follow.
So move to Luca.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, oh, no, roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. And... All right. Next up on the agenda is the MAS S Certificate of Academic Excellence and NSDC Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning Awards. Dr. Cabral?
So we have four students who are going to be honored this evening. I have the Director of Guidance, Susan Makuso, is here. Susan, if you want to come up to the podium. I just want to speak for a second about each of the awards. They do come from the superintendent's office, and we every year ask, in collaboration with the guidance department, with Principal Kavanaugh, to award these four students with these distinguished honors. The first is the MAS, which is an acronym for Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. The MAS Certificate of Academic Excellence. This award is a superintendent award. It's annually given to two high school seniors who have distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. The criteria includes things such as three-year cumulative class average, their ranking class, and then finally, personal selection by the administration. And so, we are going to take a second to acknowledge these two very deserving students. The school committee would like to also have their receiving line, if you will, and congratulate you as you come up, if you receive a certificate for this. And then, we will do the second award to the second two students. I will note that unlike what some of you may be familiar with, awards nights and things of that nature that happen at the end of the year, these are intentionally given out in the fall because they are such distinguished honors and they can be included in applications to colleges, and they are recognized as such. And so, we hope we will include that in your packages that you may be sending this very busy fall season. Mrs. Makuso?
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. Again, the Massachusetts School Superintendent's Certificate of Excellence, we were fortunate to select two students, and we'll just vote in alphabetical order. So our first recipient this evening is Franklin Chen.
You get to stand there first and hear about yourself. It's not awkward at all, I assure you.
Franklin, so this came from Mr. Fitzgerald, so he's wrote his words about you. Franklin is truly exceptional in every sense of the word. Transferring to Oliver Ames in the winter of his freshman year, Franklin hit the ground running. Over the course of his high school experience, Franklin's academic and extracurricular accomplishments are almost too numerous to mention. As a student, he completed our Capstone Math Course and B.C. Calculus as a sophomore, and has been recognized outside of school as an AP Scholar with Distinction and a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. Outside of the classroom, Franklin has been a valuable member of our school music program, various school business clubs, and several student service organizations. He puts his full energy into every commitment and constantly is seeking out new opportunities for growth and self-improvement. As an example, Franklin is a varsity member of both our school tennis and swim teams, initially joining both without actually knowing how to either play tennis or swim. During his tenure at OA, Franklin has routinely facilitated presentations and discussions both in and outside of the classroom on a variety of topics ranging from creating a financial literacy program for teens in partnership with the Y to coordinating a career fair for Oliver Ames students. All the while, Franklin has shown himself to be humble, kind, and empathetic. He is a bit of an old soul that has made meaningful and lasting connections with both faculty and peers, and his positive impact on both OA and our community will continue to be felt well after his graduation. Congratulations.
Franklin, if you want to open that, Mr. Davidson is going to take a picture of you with the school committee. Once we can get in there.
Come on down, sweetie. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Just going to have you stand right next to the chair.
Do we even know how to shut the projector off? We're getting like, that's it, power, and you guys are there. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Our other recipient tonight is Evan Vesnovskas. Evan. Evan is an exceptional young man showcasing both a talented range in academics and extracurriculars. He has taken a rigorous course load over the years, not only because he easily excels taking advanced coursework, but because he truly enjoys the content, the discourse with his peers, and the connection he builds with his teachers. He hopes to work as a material chemist, constructing new substances that can revolutionize society and solve modern issues. This is reflective of the deep commitment to making a difference. His root, excuse me, his commitment to making a difference. As a member of the OA marching band, Evan plays the trombone and serves as a section leader, working with the new and returning members. Once marching band season ends, Evan goes right into jazz band, where he's been a member since middle school. When not playing music, Evan is one of the leaders of the robotics team as a lead programmer. After COVID, the team was depleted, and it was Evan and a few other students who brought it back to the robust team it is again, attending district championships last year and in the process fostering teamwork and a sense of community. Evan is very introspective and has grown so much in these past few years, strengthening his character and enriching his contributions to our community. He possesses the intellect, creativity, and dedication necessary to succeed at the highest levels. Congratulations.
Great.
Do I start over here or over there?
You've been moving, moving around.
I'll take one with you and both of you. One, two. Do you want to give it to?
Mr. Davidson? Again, it's...
And actually, I know you have practice nights, so you can go back to practice.
And Evan, you have people here with you this evening? You have people here with you this evening? Who do you have here with you this evening? Congratulations. And, that's okay, and of course, they are two beloved and very dedicated educators right here at Easton with us. Congratulations. Thank you, enjoy practice.
All of our students are so busy, they're off.
They are, I know. The second award to two students is the National School Development Council Award. This is awarded for academic growth and student leadership in learning. The criteria for this one is that they are awarded to high school seniors who have consistently pursued a high level of academic effort and who have also served as positive role models for the student body. The recipients of this ward award exemplify admirable character and accomplishment.
Mrs. Makuso? Thank you. Again, we have two fantastic recipients this evening. The first one is Ava Hiera. Ava is a remarkable individual who excels academically and demonstrates profound commitment to leadership, community service, and the arts. As the president of the eighty-four club, Ava leads the group in spreading awareness regarding mental health, racial equity, and tobacco use, and serves on the statewide eighty-four leadership team. She is a member of both the Easton Wings of Hope and the UNICEF Club. Her compassion for others will make her an exceptional leader in the field of medicine or public health, two interests of hers. Not to stop there, Ava is a force in the arts program, having her work shown at the gallery at Patriot Place. She is a member of the OA Art Club and is a cyclical artistic art gold key award recipient. Dancing since the age of two, she is a competitive dancer and incorporates her unique talent of acrobatic contortion into her solo competitions. Ava also had the opportunity to help her, excuse me, to help develop a dance unit into the health curriculum at the KDA Two Level, showcasing her innovative spirit. And speaking of spirit, she is a member of the varsity cheerleading squad here at OA. Ultimately, what sets Ava apart is her academic prowess, her ability to bring people together, and the larger impact her efforts will have in this world. Congratulations.
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 Thank you. And you have someone here with you?
Yes, I have both my parents.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And if it's all right, Pucci's not here, but I'd still like to read this.
Please do, absolutely.
Our other recipient tonight is Pucci Lo. He is actually at swim practice and wasn't sure if he could make it tonight, but I'd still like to read about him and his wonderful accomplishments. While Pucci's academic achievements are the primary focus of his recognition, Pucci should also be recognized for his ability to be balanced, empathetic, and curious. He has immersed himself in the arts through the marching band and jazz band. He has found himself in leadership positions in student government, NHS, and TRIAM. He has excelled in leadership roles in extracurriculars like robotics and the swim team. His active involvement in the Oliver Ames community speaks to his character. He is thoughtful and works hard to establish relationships with all those around him. His intellectual curiosity is second to none and has been most evident in his exhaustion of the OA curriculum. Beyond this, he has actively sought out opportunities to self-study topics that he has a genuine interest in, from AP Computer Science to the history of flags. Pucci has been an impactful leader in his time at OA, and in all of his contributions to our community has defined what it means to be excellent. Congratulations to Pucci.
Thank you, Mrs. Makuso. Thank you. And here he is.
Thanks. Wish I stand?
You can stand right here. So much. She just said really nice things about you. I'll show it to you. Okay, now, please take this as recognition, okay?
Thank you very much.
And then, we're going to go down the line. Do you mind me reading again? I'm sorry. I think our audience will indulge us to hear it again.
I'll have you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Great things. And you're going to hear some nice things about you.
Okay, Pucci, you ready? While Pucci's academic achievements are the primary focus of his recognition, Pucci should also be recognized for his ability to be balanced, empathetic, and curious. He has immersed himself in the arts through the marching band and jazz band. He has found himself in leadership positions in student government, NHS, and TRIAM. He has excelled in leadership roles in extracurriculars like robotics and the swim team. His active involvement in the Oliver Ames community speaks to his character. He is thoughtful and works hard to establish relationships with all those around him. His intellectual curiosity is second to none and has been most evident in his exhaustion of the OA curriculum. Beyond this, he has actively sought out opportunities to self-study topics that he has a genuine interest in, from AP Computer Science to the history of flags. Pucci has been an impactful leader in his time at OA and in all of his contributions to our community has defined what it means to be excellent.
If you'll stand next to the chair. Can you just open up your...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. So, next up on the agenda, we have the NEASC Accreditation Process Presentation. Dr. Cabral?
So, for those who are unfamiliar with what we affectionately call, affectionately call NIASC, the NIASC Accreditation Process is, it is exhaustive, it is very detailed, it is a, an audit of sorts of all, and I do mean all of the components of the school building and operations, facilities, curriculum, et cetera. Principal Kavanaugh is here this evening with the two very capable and hardy chairs, co-chairs of the NIASC Accreditation Visit, Marissa Souza and Chris Koutros, and the three of them would like to orient you to the process this evening, and I believe you have some slides as well.
All right, so we can go, yep. Is this the right one? How do you speak your own professional? Thank you, Dr. Cabral. I just want to take a quick minute. I'm going to let Marissa Souza and Chris Koutros do all of the talking, but I just want to start by extending publicly my intense gratitude to the two of them. This is a huge undertaking that we started almost a year ago now, and they are, for lack of a better term, absolutely crushing it. They are the best NIASC chairs that I could ask for, and I'm just really proud to introduce them to you and thank them for everything that they're doing. So I'm going to hand the mic over to them, and they'll explain a lot about the accreditation process to you, and then we'll leave it open for questions if you have any.
Thank you for inviting us here. NIASC, which is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, accredits the quality of public and private schools in New England and internationally. OA has been accredited by NIASC since 1951, and our last accreditation visit was in 2014. Two visiting teams made of administrators and teachers from other schools are going to be visiting OA. One team in October 2025, and then another team two years later in October 2027 for our every 10-year accreditation visit, and they're going to report how well we align with their accreditation standards.
Part of the reason that we wanted to come here today was to have an open communication and a dialogue to inform you about the entire process and to welcome active participation and communication with school committee and just every member of the community, essentially. Just to speak candidly, from my own personal experience, I was privileged to go on a NIASC visit in October, and it became abundantly clear from the very first meeting I had with the superintendent and other members of the committee that there was a lack of communication between the superintendent and the self-study members. And I already know that's not the case in our district. We're very fortunate to have open communication, and so it became apparent for Chris and I that we wanted to come here to start the process now and encourage the conversation throughout the entire process. So, what is the accreditation process? This is an unfunded mandate, and we are voluntarily demonstrating our alignment with the established NIASC standards. And the accreditation process is not a permanent status. Member schools, they have to demonstrate their continuous alignment with the NIASC standards through a regular cycle of routine and special progress reports. There are five standards of accreditation that are listed.
People, and yet one more there.
There are. These are the five standards of accreditation, and we have very dedicated staff members who are responsible for each one of those standards and are documenting evidence for that.
One of the big things that people are wondering is, you know, why go through this voluntary process of accreditation? A lot of our peer schools aren't part of this process, but the biggest thing is that it benefits students. This is a way that we can ensure that students are the central focus of our educational process and that they benefit from having a strong school that needs all these best practices. Local citizens, taxpayers can see that, you know, that their tax money is funding a good quality school program that's accredited by so from people from the outside, and that the reputation of the community property values are enhanced by that accreditation. As school committee members, we thank you for having us here. This process is going to help us highlight the strengths of OA and also any areas that we have for improvement, and just involve the entire school community, you, faculty, staff, students, community stakeholders, parents who we've surveyed, all about the process of reflection and how they're affected by accreditation. Finally, as faculty and administrators, we really appreciate this process because it gives us a chance for self-reflection, for renewal, and frankly, for accountability that we're doing the things that we're supposed to do. By the way, I'd just like to do a plug. If there's any parents watching, please fill in the survey that was sent out a couple weeks ago. We'd really appreciate it.
So if you've been around for a while, NIASC has been revamped. I was here at its first, the first time that we did it in 2011 and 2012, and it has become a more simplified process, thankfully. In 2011, there were seven standards, 54 indicators, there was mandatory faculty participation. It was a grueling process, and the update, in my opinion, is sufficiently better. There are now only five standards, there's 32 principles of effective practice. They detail for you the ones that you absolutely have to meet, so they can become your priority focus if you don't meet them, and it's voluntary participation, which, again, have to stress just how awesome it is that we have faculty members who are willing to step up and do this, this job. So the main difference between the previous NIASC accreditation process versus now is there's an emphasis on accountability and growth over time. This is not a gotcha moment. This is our chance to demonstrate what we're doing really well and to acknowledge where we need to improve and to have the opportunity to work towards that, which is wonderful. It's also the, the school's ability to identify those priority areas of growth. And for us, we already know that we don't have a vision of a graduate, that we're working very hard on that, and that we can focus on alignment for curriculum. So we already know going into this process that there are two things as a school we value, and we can emphasize that in our practice moving forward.
Yes.
Right. So at the beginning of the school year, we selected 10 members of our steering and self-reflection committee, and we're really appreciative for them for volunteering their time to lead our faculty through the effort of our self-reflection.
We're also extremely thankful for the support of our assistant superintendent, our superintendent, our professional development committee, because they advocated for us and were able to give us time during our most recent PD to gather evidence together, and that has been a crucial benefit at this point, which allows for our, our members of the standards four and five to focus on the writing process now moving forward. They are going to be able to hopefully present their self-reflection by February, and that will then give the remaining standards an opportunity to chronologically move forward so that we can hopefully be done with our self-reflection by the end of the school year. And then, as Chris kind of already mentioned, our first of the two NIASC visits is this October.
So what we are really appreciative for you and for people who are watching in the community is part of this process is talking about the connections we do have with the community and highlighting those, and really selling this as not only a strength of our school community, but a way to get other people engaged. So we're looking on establishing partnerships with local community organizations, businesses. We sent out the parent survey that I talked about, and we are actively seeking community partners who want to be involved in the process.
One thing that we would be remiss to mention, though, is that there is a financial component to it, so we do have a recommended budget from NIASC as to what we are required to offer the visiting team that comes. So they recommend a total conference budget of $3,500, and that's to accommodate for the cost of rooms, which we are responsible to pay for, the conference room, to give them the opportunity to work in the evenings, to review our self-study, and then write the reflection in response to that, the cost of meals, both in school and out of school, and also potentially travel expenses for any member that is coming far out of district, and we would have to pay for them to come here and go back. That's essentially it. Are there any questions that we could address about the NIASC process?
Any questions from committee members? Okay. No, thank you very much. I think it was a very thorough presentation, and the materials that were provided in advance were helpful for us to read through and really understand the process and the constraints. I guess a question for Dr. Cabral. Obviously, we knew this was coming in the budget to cover. Yeah. Great, thank you. All right.
This, just having gone through this, it was kind of a joke for a while. Every time, I've only been in four different districts, but every time I got to a district, they were going into NIASC. And the same is true in this district. Shortly after I got here, it was the NIASC process, and now get to do it again. No matter what they tell you about how much better it is, it is still an awful lot of work. I was a chair. Yes, there were more indicators, but it's a lot of organization. It is a lot of, you have to provide a lot of evidence. You have a lot of report writing to do. It is a great idea to go on a visit first. Being on a visit to another district is very illuminating, but that's an awful lot of work, too. You're not just going to observe. There is a lot to read, a lot to write, a lot to synthesize, a lot to report out. So I give you credit for doing that as well. But, as they so eloquently said, "The product is only as good as the participation into it." So if we want authentic parent voice, if we want authentic faculty voice, student voice, community voice, please, as Chris invited you, please fill out surveys, please answer questionnaires, please attend any focus groups they may have. You, it is true, your information will be reflected, and it's always nice, no matter how many times we may think we know what's going on, or it's always good to get an independent set of eyes from teams that come from different school systems. And so, we invite you to really help these chairs by providing your input. It is very valuable to this process, and it can make it, the more participation, the more valid it is for their work going forward. Thank you for taking this on.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. All right, then we can head back.
Well, that needs to stay on.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we need to find... What have you come up with? If you want to...
Do you need a moment to introduce the next agenda?
Yes.
Are we going back?
Then I think, yeah, I think there's, um... Do they have a slide?
No.
Okay.
No slides.
No slides. We can, yeah, we can.
Oh, no. All right. All righty. So the next item on the agenda is the... So the next item on the agenda is the discussion of the PACE, which is the Promoting a Sustainable Easton Committee. So Dr. Cabral, do you want to do a quick intro?
As Chair Starr said, promoting a sustainable Easton PACE was, I don't want to take anything away from your presentation, but it, it is the will of the citizens that this group is together and is doing a very thorough review of all things budget in the entire town. And the two co-chairs, or the chair and vice chair are here this evening, Tom Broussard and Nancy Donahue, to give an update on the status of that committee and the next steps going forward.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Chair Starr, for giving us the opportunity to present to everyone and Dr. Cabral for that introduction and for viewers on ECAT and the opportunity for you to be with us this evening. As Dr. Cabral said, my name is Nancy Donahue. I'm a 29-year resident of the town of Easton as well as just completed 20 years teaching in the Eastern public schools. And I say that because it's such a pleasure to serve in this capacity with the town need that we have and that need is the PACE committee right now. PACE, as we heard, stands for Promoting a Sustainable Easton. And the committee came about at the May 2024 town meeting as a result of voters who really wanted the study of what we really know is a budget gap, a budget gap that has occurred for numerous years. The town has balanced the budget with a lot of sacrifices and a budget that will be more difficult in the upcoming year largely because of two four-year federally funded mandates, which will expire on top of other budget challenges that we have. And Tom will talk further about those. But the committee is a very unique opportunity for many representatives in the community to work together. The 19-member community consists of general town government, the schools, fire, police, as well as six at-large members, residents such as myself who volunteered and had to interview for the committee. We have spent over, I think, 25 hours now studying, reading, discussing with the idea that it's a great place, a structured place in order for us to tackle these very, very difficult issues that many towns in Massachusetts, in addition to the whole country, will be facing this year. But I think we at Easton are uniquely positioned to have this committee work together, really across some of the departments that other towns don't have that opportunity and to have this discussion well in advance of our next town meeting. So three of the questions that the committee has been charged to look at is how do we fix the revenue shortfall, really focusing on the revenue side? How are we spending our money, focusing on the expense side? And then how does our budget impact services? Because we all know that with the current problem that we have, the current challenge that we have, there will be a huge focus on what's going to happen to services, both on the public safety side, town government side, and in our schools. So we are happy that we have a varied membership that has an opportunity to look at this across many, many interests and hope that we can, as the committee has been charged, come to the town again before the town meeting, but very specifically at the town meeting with some proposed solutions. And we're going to talk about ways that we hope that the town can continue to become involved in this.
Thanks Nancy. That's a great job for setting up the, the status and why we're here. Honestly, it, it's the residents that have brought us together and the issue is very important. Candidly, we don't face this issue alone. Many cities and towns across the state face it. And we haven't done anything wrong importantly to get here. I think that's really important to let people know. What we have is a fundamental challenge that, of how we as a town, a community, get our revenue, which largely is governed by our largest piece of revenue driver, which is taxation. And I think most of us know that that is capped by state law at two and a half percent increase year over year. And I think we all know inflation alone is a number that's much higher than two and a half percent. I would give credit to our town who for years have done a tremendous amount with less. They have found ways to be savvier with our spend so that we continue to do more and produce more results with less. And I think the celebration of the awards that we have tonight, the recognition of how our high school has performed against the state are just acknowledgement of that. And what I, what I mean by that is we are tasked with solving a problem that is very simple mathematically. Town budgets have to balance. You don't get to borrow money. So whatever the revenues are, are the expenses. And so from that perspective, we know the solution will either be to reduce our expenses or to drive more revenue. And driving more revenue, when your largest revenue driver is taxation at over 72%, you can't change that. You can't grow that unless you get new growth. And thankfully, we do get new growth in our community, but we are a bedroom community. It is part of our values and what we desire to be on average, that most of our taxation is residential, residentially driven and we all welcome that. And that's not a bad thing. Easton's property values over the last, since 2019, have increased by 31%, far more than any of our surrounding communities. So people value what we offer, which is a great thing. The challenge is that over time of two and a half percent being a primary driver, some degree of new growth and certainly local receipts, there are other revenues, but you know why I'm focusing on taxation. If your expense structure continues to go up at a faster rate, then that causes a dynamic tension. And the fact that Easton is having this conversation proactively means that we have time to solve it by the, by the time we get to the next town meeting. So the PACE committee has to do two things. Mid-December, we have to present to select board, finance committee, perhaps the school committee, but if not, we'll be there and we're happy to come in, a understanding of our current state. Where are we? And as a group, I think 25 hours is being light, but we have compared ourselves using publicly available information to surrounding communities, to DART communities, to core communities, to communities that have the same residential and commercial tax split, to communities that people on our committee thought might be good to compare ourselves against. And universally, the town of Easton spends less either per capita on the town side by 12 to 14% against other communities. Pick your group. Honestly, we picked a lot of groups. And we also spend less per pupil. As a matter of fact, I believe where second low, I'm going to get this wrong, but you will please correct me, but I believe where average spend per pupil is second lowest against DART communities and fourth lowest against neighboring communities in the lower third. So we have been, did I get that right?
Yeah.
Flip it.
Yeah.
Flip it, sorry. So second in neighboring communities and lower third in DART communities.
Right. The bottom of both.
Bottom of both. So for context, so that you can understand the size of what we're talking about, if we just spent what Stoughton spends per pupil, that would be approximately $5.6 million more in our school budget. So that's going, pardon?
Annually.
Annually, annually. So the numbers we are talking about are not small. The size of our problem happens to be, or challenge, happens to be what the PACE committee will start asking itself at our next meeting. But let me tell you why the size of the problem is important. Our expense structure is incredibly heavy weighted towards people and salary. Our leadership, Dr. Cabral, school committee, select board, town administrator Reed, have certainly over-indexed to preserve the human asset of our community, rightly so. That adds the most value. So whatever else we were able to control expense-wise, you can see that that has gone down. When I say over-indexed, it's roughly 83% of the school budget is people. It's roughly 85 to 90% for our key town departments like police, fire, and DPW. So why is that important? It means that for every $1 million of challenge, whether we want to reduce expenses or add revenue, if we want to reduce expenses and we average 85% of it coming from salaries, then in large part, that's about eight and a half people for every million dollars of challenge we have to solve. This is in the presentation, so for the, to give context for the school side, there was a slide presented to PACE by the school committee, helping us to understand the current state of affairs to achieve our December objective, that says we have approximately $1.8 million of expense challenge because ARPA is going away, because ASER funds are going away. We use those funds appropriately, that we should have used them, but regrettably, after four years, those programs are going away, but the need still exists. If that is $1.8 million of challenge, that doesn't even speak to the fact that fundamentally other expenses are going up at a faster rate than our revenue is. So while I said our taxation is capped at two and a half percent, our average revenue growth over the last three or four years is 3%. So if you spend 5% next year, 2% of $120 million budget is meaningful. It's 2.4 million. So that on top of a $1.8 million fund, you know, ARPA funds going away. So hypothetically, every million is eight and a half people. If it's a $4 million problem and we solve this on the expense side, it's conceivable you could say that's 33 people. So I'm not here to scare you. I am here to impress upon you and the audience at home the gravity of the situation, why I give Easton a ton of credit for asking these questions and having this committee do the work now. Because if you try to solve this next May on the floor of town meeting, trust me, if you haven't been to town meeting, that is the wrong place to solve a seven-figure problem. Because people will get up and start talking about a $15,000 issue or a $25,000 issue and it will go on for tirelessly for hours. Appropriately so, it's an important matter, but the size of the problem is so big that you would miss the forest from trees. Why we're here and so grateful for your time tonight, A, ask us any questions you have. We are trying to do our best to be as knowledgeable as we can to raise the alarm so that we create engagement. Because what you're really going to recognize is that while we are talking numbers and budgets, they are a direct reflection of human interaction, of the efforts we put forth every day. They are a direct reflection of our priorities and our values as a community. And I can assure you, the decisions that we make at the next town meeting will impact Easton residents for years to come. Years to come. Because there will be a mathematical solution. The budgets have to balance. So if we can engage with the community and understand what's important to the school committee, what's important to the school community, what's important to the residents, what do we value, then it will help us because the second deliverable we have to do is literally provide a recommendation. We have to identify the size of the problem and then we have to articulate a solution. And that solution, again, I know, simple is hard, is a great saying. It's real simple. It's either going to be more revenue and if the residents don't want more revenue, it will be lower expense. And if the residents want lower expense, then it's going to be people because 85 to 90% of our expense are people in our community. That's just fact. So hopefully what we're doing is not alarming you, but we are motivating you to engage. Share your feelings, your beliefs, what's important. You have some great advocates, I can assure you. Dr. Cabral, Chair Starr are really helping us as a PACE committee. Marissa, sorry, here as well, like you don't have too much going on. And it, it's eye-opening to the people that don't live and breathe what you do every day. What, what do you truly matters to creating a valuable educational experience? We all know, I think, the town of Easton and its residents support an incredible and expect an incredible educational experience and we value that. So any other thoughts that I may have missed?
I was just going to suggest a way people can engage with us and talk about January as well.
Sure.
Am I?
Please do. No, no, this is, this is great.
So you can attend our meetings remotely or in person. Please do that if you wish. But also on January 8th, we're going to have a very important open house at the Quisset House, which is right next to the Ames Free Library. And there'll be an opportunity for a brief presentation of all of the things that we've learned so far, as very brief though, but with some interactive opportunity with members on the committee to sort of answer some questions. Maybe there's something you're interested in more than another thing and you can really engage with some of the personnel who will be there. So we invite you, please join us. It'll be from 6 to 8 in the evening, again, at Quisset House on January 8th. But as Tom said, you know, you know so many of us in town, you've heard a lot of the committee members' names. We'll, when we see you, we're going to be giving out business cards, we're going to be sending out our little one pager that we put together. So you can also look on the town website that has a whole PACE, very nicely organized, frequently asked questions, all the documents we've been looking at. Please fact-check us. If you see something, you've heard something that's been said and you're thinking, that's not the way I understood it, please take a look at these documents and please engage with us because this is a town effort. We, we need your help too.
Absolutely, well said. December 11th is our next meeting. If you want to have a riveting five-hour sit-in on budgets and questions, please do. That's about the average length of our meetings, which is great. And you know, again, I, I do want to go back, we didn't do anything wrong. You know, there are things that in this room, you think you all would appreciate, that we are a state minimum aid, school-funded for Chapter 70. That in 2010, Chapter 70 was 31% of our budget. It, it funded 31% of our budget. And last year it was 22.2%. That means we as residents in the community have helped support that. We're getting less funds from the government than we need, candidly. And I think everybody here hopefully is uniquely aware of the, actually not aware of the complicated calculation of Chapter 7 funding, but, but it's just not an easy thing. And I give credit to our, Dr. Cabral and to our, our school committee for going to the state house, which is where you need to go, to try to affect change so we can get more for our community. The two and a half, it's not a bad thing. It, it forces communities to make sure we're being efficient with our spend. So I don't want you to think I'm beating on that and that's the only reason why we're in this predicament. It's not. You know, the values of our community, we want to be largely residentially based. I, I'm not sure that we want to have or would be able to attract a Gillette Stadium. And you know, I don't know if people know this, but our largest taxpayers are Avalon Number One and the natural gas terminal across from, on 106 there. Hopefully everybody knows where I said, but it's Dance Express to me if you're wondering what it's across from. And those are our two largest commercial pathways. And you know, we, I think we have done a thoughtful job as a community trying to instill new gra, new growth. We've installed sewers in key places. We're trying to build out thoughtful commercial growth, support restaurants. So new growth has been decent for us. We're growing our population in Easton over time. That is a great thing that not every city in town and, and nor the state can say necessarily. So what Easton has is a great collection of values, priorities, assets, school system, green space, whatever our recipe is, is winning, whether it's your home value, which is people's largest single investment that they normally have in their lifetime. So I'm really proud of that, that we've been able to say that, which is great. But we're coming to an inflection point where we're going to have to now memorialize via a budget what we want to reflect on a go-forward basis. And we just ask your engagement. While 19 is a large number of people to discuss these really heavy topics with, credit to the team, they've all been incredibly great discussions, but what we need is a couple thousand. We have 25,000 people in Easton. We need a couple thousand people to give us their feedback. And that's what we would ask each of you. So if you thought coming here was to just receive info, we're going to give you homework. There are cards up here with QR codes on the back. Take one, scan it. Once you're done with it, share it, give it to somebody, leave it at the checkout line at a supermarket counter, but just please pass along the message. We have heard people say, you don't want to really hear what I have to say because I know I could fix it literally if you just did this, this, and this. And we say, well, what are this, this, and this? That's what we need. And no, we do want to hear what you say. Like we want to talk this out. There are no, there's no information here that we didn't get from public sources, DESI, that we didn't get from state databases. And we ourselves are skeptical of each other so that the product we come back with, a recommendation that will impact this town for years to come, is as informed as possible, is as thoughtful as possible. Because I assure you, no matter what we do, it will impact people and those people have names. If it's expense reduction, it will impact people. We don't know who, but there will be. But there will be names. And if it's a revenue growth, it will impact people. People, revenue growth most likely would be through a tax increase. There are people that will find it very difficult in today's day and age to bear that burden. So we know there's a human aspect to this, which is why we are imploring you to spread the word, create engagement. Because if we can do more work on the front end, it will save, it will hopefully help facilitate a meaningful town meeting next year. You said we had an hour and a half for this? We're on schedule. But do you have any questions?
Yeah, any questions from the committee members? Like, I know Dr. Cabral and I have been, you know, part of the team. So I wanna give you guys an opportunity to speak directly to our chair and co-chair, vice chair.
I have to be honest, when you said about how much time you would take, having been in all those meetings, I thought, wow, good for you. And, but you did really encapsulate a lot of information. And I think in a very understandable, clear, fact-based way. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us, honestly.
Thank you.
We're happy to come back anytime you need us. We are a traveling show. We have a lot of other gigs. So progress early. But we would love to come back perhaps after we meet, we discuss some milestones, just to keep you informed. And we would invite you to attend any of our meetings at those milestones. We really would ask you for your engagement, Paul.
So a question from my end. You mentioned, first of all, thank you. This was an amazing summary. You've mentioned a lot of key data points. I think you also mentioned there's a faction. So how do we share that with the community? Not just sharing what else you want to know, but educating people on all of what you just said, which they need to also understand, to understand the problem. And they may not watch all the five hours of meetings that everyone is attending. So, but in your synthesis, you covered a lot of points that we want people to grasp
Sure.
across the town so that they will engage more. So is there something that we can be sharing with those we know to help pass them off?
Thank you. I, I think the best bet is to go on the town website and look under the documents for the PACE committee. And there is a QR code that will get to this here, but viewers online, there is a wonderful frequently asked questions section, which literally begins, "I wanna know a little bit about this problem. Click here." "I wanna know a lot more detail about this, this challenge." "I wanna know everything you studied for 25 hours." So all of those options are available to folks. And I think that's the best place to start. If you see us in town, we're going to probably try to hand you one of these little flyers and a business card. But really, just going on the town website, you will have access to all of these. And that's sort of whatever level, we're ready to engage. So thank you so much for that question. Because that's, really, I have learned so much and I've been a resident of this town, as I mentioned, for 29 years, worked in the schools for 20 years. And I have learned so much in these months. It has been amazing. So it is a little bit like drinking from a fire hose at first, but very valuable. And I agree with Tom. You will see how amazingly well I believe this town has done. That I think some people are sort of saying, "Oh, I didn't even know there was a problem." And, and it has been communicated. It's been communicated in town meeting. It's been communicated in town budget documents by the superintendent for a number of years. But we sort of have always got through it with, with, for a number of different ways. So it's not a new issue at all. But I think amazing that some folks have not been aware that it's been out there. So.
Agreed.
Thank you for that question.
And Kelly, we are packaging a presentation for consumption. It's due for December 16th. So we'll have a nice, concise PowerPoint. And then we'll have a white paper that has a tremendous amount of, I mean, if you can make it five hours of a meeting, you can probably go five hours of this white paper. And it will have a lot of the grids, the detail, the comparisons. And it'll have an index of a lot of information that we compared. We also looked at headcount. So how do we staff? So it's not just about expense. But we looked at headcount versus our peer groups. And we are under on headcount, which makes sense. It correlates if it's our largest expense, why we're under on spend per pupil or per capita. But we looked at positions. We looked at, you know, the fire department in most of our surrounding towns have three lieutenants. We have one. I also wanna say, when we talk about the solution of the expenses, and Nancy, you alluded to it. It, it almost doesn't give credit to the work that has been done in the preceding years of all of the steps that people like Dr. Cabral or Town Administrator Reed, School Committee Select Board have taken to make it through each year. I'm not sure if everybody knows, but on the town side, we centralized our emergency response. We joined a regionalized SEMRAC program southeast of Massachusetts, Emergency Response C something. Don't know.
Center.
But center, thank you so much. See, together we get there. It's great to remember. But that saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Like, that was thoughtful proactivity on that side. In the school committee presentation I spoke about earlier, where we laid out the 1.8 million dollars of incremental costs this year versus last year, largely ARPA and AC driven, there are 40 examples of savings that we've done that are just the top ones. They're not the little things. But that's just the school side. So the, the town side, we put in solar field. We put in lights. We, there are so many things that we have done through time as a town. And running lean, like we do more with less, that's not a bad thing either. If we get more for our spend, I'm okay with that. That's a, as a business guy, that's a great investment. However, there comes a point where you may not be able to maintain that. And what we are leaning towards is that that point is coming very soon. So there's more information to come. We'll have materials. We'll share them with all of the committees, like we normally do. You can use them. Take a picture of the handouts or the cards if you don't have enough of them. Spread the word. Get as many people to Quissette as you can. And if anybody wants to talk to us, just get in touch with us. We've had more one-on-one conversations with people who might not have understood some of the fact pattern. And they walked away appreciative of understanding more, even if it didn't change their thought process. But they were informed. And that's all we can hope to do.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll add, we've spent a considerable amount of time in the last meeting discussion discussing communication, strategies and protocols, and how to meet the, the town members where they are, right? How to find people where they are, give them information that is answering the questions that they have and providing the info that they need. Not too much, not too little. People will obviously have varying degrees of interest, of, of background knowledge, et cetera. So there's been a lot of thought and consideration about communicating out. And as I, you know, we happen to have some talented folks on the committee already who've been helping out with things like this really nice one-page graphic. And so there'll be, you know, we've talked about, you know, different, different media uses and, and, you know, trickling out maybe, you know, small bits of information and, and what are some of the best channels to do that? So I think the meeting that we have in January will be really informative as we sort of gather and get a sense for what are some of the questions that we're getting the most? And we can be, you know, there might be, I think we have a good sense because so many of the committee members are brand-new to this particular problem set, right? And so we've, we've had some very, some great questions coming just among the committee members of, of setting a baseline level of knowledge. But the more we hear from people and talk to people, the more informed we'll become about what's the, the key information that folks need to know and how can we get it to them in a way that's, you know, responsive to exactly what they need to make an informed choice later.
Well said. It's very, I'll end on this. It's very interesting for us. The, the conversations we've had, as Nancy pointed out, in 2017, we did a town operational audit that largely confirmed that we do more with less. And here we are in 2024, and we've affirmed that through the years. Then you juxtapose that Yuri Langwater Farm, having an amazing night, getting pizza, and having our local craft brewery, Shovel Town, on-site. And it's idyllic. It's exactly why we live here. And when you try to help the general public know that there is a challenge, there is this problem that we have to engage on, it's, it's a change of pace. It's like hitting the brakes when you're going fast. And we wanna make sure people can understand why we're having this conversation. Because it is such a contrast. You know, we, at our presentation at town meeting, realized we're going after the Tricentennial Committee of happiness, of all, celebrating all the great things we are. And then we had the opportunity to get up to say, "Look, we just have this challenge." And again, it's not an alarm. We don't wanna be alarmist. But we do need to raise awareness so that we can get to a good place. Awesome.
We'll add on the, the town, the town has, you know, envisioned Easton in these master plans and, you know, looking out long-term at what, what do the people of Easton want Easton to be today, tomorrow, and into the future? And then we've just gone through that exercise on the school side. We're gonna see our strategic plan tonight. So there's a lot of collaboration and envisioning about what, you know, where we, we've gotten feedback from the community about what we value and, and what we want to continue with and, and all of the reasons that we're here and that we, you know, folks invest their time and their, their money in living here. And the thought of not being able to deliver on some of that is really paralyzing and, and kinda sad, right? So there's a lot going on. And we wanna just keep a good thing going, keep these good things going. And hopefully get in front of it so that we don't have to make draconian choices later that, you know, just, just take away from what it is that we want as a community. We, at the state School Committee Conference, there was another community that spoke and gave a panel on collaboration between town and schools in terms of finance. They spoke about a committee that they had put together, something similar a few years ago. And I went and I, I, you know, was like happy to hear that we weren't the first people to come up with this idea. I, I have to say, the work we've done, I think, is much more in-depth and has way more people involved over a longer period of time than any other community that I've seen or heard of. So I, it, it has been very robust. And I wanna thank you for your leadership and keeping us on task with a very, very large, very large job. But you're both doing a tremendous job. And I'm glad that you volunteered your time and have taken on the responsibility of leading this effort. It's been really tremendous to work with people.
Thank you. It's a great team, to be honest.
Thank you.
Appreciate you all. We'll talk to you soon.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we've got discussion and vote to approve two members to the Professional Leave Committee. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So we have a vehicle in the Unit A contract that allows for a professional improvement fee, maybe more commonly understood as a sabbatical, an educational sabbatical. And you were given the contract language, which is on our website, that pertains to that on page 28. We are not discussing that this evening. What we're doing is the, we don't have two members of the school committee or, it's actually three people chosen by the school committee. And three people chosen by Easton Educators Association and the superintendent as the chair. So it's six people total. And we don't normally have this as a standing committee in all of your subcommittees because it happens so infrequently. Since I've been here, this is the second request that we've gotten. So what we do is what we did last time. We convene the committee when we have a request. And now we do have one. So what we're asking for this evening is, considering the language, you can see what is required. You can see an example of the proposal from the educator is to just determine who you may want to be the three members chosen by the Easton School Committee. Whether they're school committee members or not is entirely up to you.
So just to clarify, I don't think we, I think this was, this was what we received. So I think you mentioned something specific about the proposal from a specific educator?
Well, I have the proposal, but it really isn't necessary for everyone except the people who are gonna serve on this.
Understood, okay. Do you recall the last time who, what were the three roles? So there was one school committee member?
I think there were two of us.
Two, and then, do you remember who the third was? Or do you have, do we have a recommendation? Do we want it to be, would it make sense to have, you know, HR or assistant superintendent or?
If you are able to avoid a majority of school committee, it is not an open meeting.
Yep.
But it can be three people. It's up to you whether it is someone who is a member of the school department. I believe, if I remember correctly, and I'm sorry I didn't check, I believe that the determination of the school committee last time was for school, two school committee members and the immediate supervisor of whoever is asking for relief.
Is that your recollection?
That sounds right.
Okay.
Yeah. Does that make sense to everybody?
Sure. Okay. All right. So, um, let's see. Should we have this as, yes, so we can vote tonight. So are there any members who have an interest? And again, this would just be convened as an ad hoc, you know, committee, nothing standing. So do any members, Lauren, you have interest? Anybody else of interest? Kelly, you have interest?
Unless it's you and Joe.
Nope, that's okay. All right. Great. Thank you both.
Do we have, under that process of recommending the supervisor of the individual, do we know if that person would accept our recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. I just wouldn't want to nominate someone who then would not feel comfortable because of they were playing a duplicative role with the union.
No, that's fair. I actually think they would appreciate being involved in the process considering it's one of their employees.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
All right. So then I make a motion to appoint Lauren Loomis and Kelly Perseo and the immediate supervisor of a candidate to the professional leave committee to fulfill the three members chosen by the Easton School Committee. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote? Oh, nope.
No.
Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So I imagine you'll be in touch then with both on next up.
Yes. Would it just be one meeting or is it possible? Last time it was just one meeting.
Yeah.
Great. Let's see. Next up is a review of 2024, 2025 grants with a possible vote to accept. Dr. Cabral?
So, excuse me, per best practices for finance in the district, we do present the, not only the entitlement grants, but the grants that are competitive grants that the district may receive and the school committee votes on them. It is not, it sounds like there may be some controversy there. Why do people need to vote on it? But it is really for your informational purposes and the vote acknowledges that. But of course, if you have any questions about any of the grants or you don't want to accept any of them, we can have a discussion. You can let us know. But the grants that have the four-digit numbers on the left-hand side that says fund code, those are entitlement grants from the state. Not all of them, excuse me. They are all from the state. But the first one is the Early Childhood Special Education Program, federal entitlement grant. And I'm realizing people in the audience may not have this, so I'll read the amounts as well. That's $35,686. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, that's a federal entitlement grant, over $1 million. Almost all of that goes to paraprofessionals. Title I, which is basic grants, $138,482. Title I is for the escalated costs of wraparound services for low-income resident children. Title II, Supporting Effective Instruction, that is what we refer to as a professional development grant, $49,128. Title III is English Language Acquisition and Academic Achievement Program for English Learners and Immigrant Children and Youth. That's $17,765. Title IV is Student Support and Enrichment Grant. That is $21,000. The Early College Planning Grant, we just received notification that we were awarded that. Out of the consortium, we have the South Shore Consortium that's working together. And out of the currently 10 districts, we're one of three that received that funding for our early college programming. So we're excited because that provides subsidy and college credits for students in underrepresented subgroups, including first-generation college students. Sarah's Village, you saw the presentation. You actually already voted on that, but we wanted you to have everything together in one document. That's $20,000. The Vacation Acceleration Academies. If you remember during February, April vacation, we had the Acceleration Academies. That's $103,000. The Comprehensive School Health Services Grant. Our nurse coordinator, Colleen Clark, oversees that, $29,600 for some materials, software, and so forth that's used by the nurses. And the MHSP College Grant from William James, which is $5,000. The total of all of these grants is $1,400 and, excuse me, $1,416.
No. $1,400,000.
Thank you, math teacher.
Okay. Get those commas in there.
Thank you. They're very, very important.
Very important.
Yes. So this requires a vote on the school, of the school committee to accept the grants of course used by the school department.
And are all of, of these grants, are most of them grants we've received in the past minus the Sarah's Village one and the early college planning grant?
Actually, we have gotten an early college planning grant before and Sarah's Village as well.
Okay. Oh, right. So they brought them.
Four of them. Right.
They didn't raise that one in there. So most of these we've received in the past?
Usually they had a little more money in them.
Yeah.
Yes. Unfortunately, they have gone down. That was in the last budget presentation we had. They are not predictable. And we typically don't find out. I think actually when we did our last budget presentation, we showed you longitudinally what those were over the last several years. And the only grant that was populated at that time was Title I. That's how long it takes for them to let us know after the, after the budget is done and we have our state funding. That's when most of the grants come out. So we have to use that longitudinal data to try to make choices that will go to school year.
So I have a question that, I'm trying to make sure I phrase it correctly to understand from my own education. When the federal government is giving us a grant like this, this million-dollar grant, and new federal government takes office, if that gets canceled, do we still have the $1 million but they are canceling it from then on out? Or can they shut that off partway through?
That, any grant can be reduced or taken away.
At any time.
At any time.
That's what I want to understand. Thank you.
Well, what I'm saying is we were, let me just make sure I understand you. This grant is $1,293. We have that for this year.
That's what I wanted to understand. Thank you.
And it must spend by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Next year it could be zero.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to understand. If this is intact and is applied to our school year, we are for this school year.
Well, that's my understanding. It's never happened differently.
Okay.
But I am not as educated in the nuances of what could potentially happen because it could be something that has never happened before.
That's my, yeah.
Right.
Yes. I, it was on, I was trying to understand if it was transferred to us now, if it came over time because our school year overlaps with a federal fiscal situation going on. So I just wanted to make sure and the presidency changed. Okay. Thank you.
And so you, you guys might recall, this was something that, well, it came up during the joint conference as a best practice. And we did talk about the practicality gap of approving grants during our budget cycle when they're not actually confirmed until after we do our budget. So this will be the, the practice going forward is in the, earlier in the year, probably in first quarter or with our first quarter budget update, we'll have this. So it basically just kind of retroactively confirms receipt of all of those entitlement grants. And then anything that's been competitive, we have been approving all along because those have been presented to us in the same way that we accept gifts. So it's really the entitlement grant piece of this that's new. And again, that was brought to our attention as a best practice that some other districts are following. It would ask maybe for future, I think it would be helpful if we could have the prior year amount and any budgeted amount. I know, you know, I know you were able to budget the Title, Title I and that the actual amount came in pretty close to what was budgeted. But I think, you know, knowing if we had put a plug in and then it dramatically changed, to be able to highlight that would be helpful to us.
It would also be helpful to know if there is a restriction on use of the grant. So I know some grants are only allowed to use. That's what, it would be helpful to understand because it.
The restricted use.
Exactly. Exactly.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Great feedback. Any other feedback questions for Dr. Cabral? Do you have any questions? All right. Then would somebody like to make a vote to accept the grants presented by Dr. Cabral?
So move, Delica.
Can I get a second?
First, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. So next up, we have some policy updates. So our agenda has us voting to approve ACA, JB slash AC, JC. So, all right, let me, let's go through these maybe more slowly because some of them are approving deletions and some of them are approving changes. And I know Jackie had taken the lead with presenting this last time. She's not here today, so Nancy, are you going to take the lead?
Yeah. I think ACA, I have help from Carol. She'll help me.
Great.
ACA is our second reading, I believe, right? ACA, second. They should all be. The only thing at the, so most of the policies you see at the bottom, it says like revised, adopted. I don't know why it's not printed on this one because the one I looked at had it. But all of these policies, if they're voted on today, will have reviewed December 5th, 2024. So that the next go-round of policy review, you'll know that it was looked at at this point. Some of these policies that we have been looking at are very old. Even though they say they've been, you know, adopted or whatever, they're still old.
Can I make a suggestion to maybe either change, either add like affirmed, like reviewed and affirmed or just affirmed or something like that versus?
Yep.
Because review can be a little open-ended.
Okay.
In my head at least.
So ACA is just, as you can see, it's the nondiscrimination and harassment based upon sex.
I'm just going to look at the minutes because I know Lynn had done a very detailed summary of what we had reviewed last time. Yes. Okay. So ACA, this is the Title IX policy. And the suggestion last time was to have the Assistant Superintendent's Office listed as the office for students and the Director of Human Resources for employees and then add a link to the Bullying Prevention Plan. So assuming were those changes made?
It should be add the grievance process like we did for the bullying prevention.
Right here. The third paragraph. Yeah.
Oh, right on the package.
Third paragraph.
The grievance, okay, grievance. So then, am I seeing the?
So what?
Assistant Superintendent?
So it's the District Title IX Coordinator, which at this time is the Assistant Superintendent.
Okay.
But it's in the office of the superintendent.
Okay.
And the, a lot, all these policies, if they have addresses and phone numbers in, have been changed.
Okay.
To reflect the move over to 48 Spooner Street. Correct.
And what about that we had discussed? Because this policy applies to both students and employees, right?
Yes.
So I think we had talked about having the Director of Human Resources listed. Is just the, just using the office of the superintendent will get them to the right person within the office? Or did we want to list HR separately?
My note tag was suggested to have the Assistant Superintendent's Office listed as the office for students and the Director of Human Resources listed as the office for employees.
Okay. So we need to list that.
And then adding link to the bullying prevention plan and bullying policy on the website.
Right.
Yeah. So the, what you're referring to is the handicap policy that we reviewed, that we said the office of the superintendent and the superintendent would then.
Delegate.
Delegate. And then Dr. Cabral, what you just read, I believe is a typo in regards to the bullying prevention plan.
This is the nondiscrimination basis of sex.
Oh.
Yes. What I was, what we were referring to at the time of the meeting was to add the grievance process like we did for bullying prevention.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. So should, so in this one, should the, as we discussed last time, should there be a note in here specifying that for staff, their contact is the Director of Human Resources?
That was the, that was a suggestion. That's up to you all.
Okay.
How you all want to.
Doesn't look like it. Okay. So that doesn't look like it was added. So it's a, probably not ready then to vote on this one as is. Okay. All right. Okay. So we can, this one to the next meeting.
AC slash JC?
Yes. So next is AC slash JB. And notes from, let's see, to just combine them. So there were no further edits to them. It was just to combine them. Looks like the reference is there.
Right. And then this one does have the dates.
So should we add?
But, see revised, so it would be revised and affirmed, right?
Yeah.
So we're not going to vote on any of these?
No, we can, we can vote on J, AC, JB.
Okay. So next up is JC. And the notes on that were to delete. And I think we were right because this one, we no longer have attendancy areas because we only have one school per grade. Okay. So we're going to throw it on that one.
Question?
Yes. So the paper we have is just JC itself. So we vote to delete the whole policy.
Yep. And there'll be a reference in the back of the policy manual of deleted policies. So there'll be an appendix so that if it were, ever were an issue again, there would be a record of having that model, policy that has.
So this would be updated with the deletion date? And then we would put a reference at the end?
Yep.
That's what I was, I was trying to understand the documentation process of that.
Yeah. So I think Jackie had last time explained that there'll be an appendix of anything that's been deleted.
Since I had missed last time, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. And then same thing with JCA. Again, where we only have one school per grade. There's no longer a need to assign students. And then we had JEB. Or I guess we can JF.
JFE1?
Okay. Yes. So this one was, the suggestion was to delete this. And was this because it was a duplicate of JF?
It went with, right.
What are we looking at? Which policies?
JF dash E dash one. So it's the school admissions?
The recommendation was to remove because that's just a recitation of the law.
Okay.
And I believe Jackie said it's also a curfew.
Yep. Yep. So JEB is the entrance age. So this time, last time, we had just discussed striking the revision date. Yep. And, and then otherwise. Yep.
So this is the same language that was used at that time?
Yep. And we, we'd actually discussed the item number two, the initial admissions. We had discussed that and had agreed that that should stand, that the schools, the school itself is the best suited to make a decision about admission.
Right. On this one, I just had a question. Is there any feedback from the administration of that school, of William James, on this? Or are they, do they have any questions or concerns on this?
No. Not that I know of. Did you get any questions, Carols? I didn't get any.
And Mr. Cedarbones actually here that day was.
Right. Very helpful. Yep.
Okay. That's what I wanted to confirm. Because this has moved from being multiple principals when it was last revised to being Principal Cedarbones. So I just wanted to make sure that he didn't have any concerns about that if there was a standard change that he was on.
No. It's almost like a case, I don't want to say case by case, but they seem to have a handle of it at the school. Right.
All right. Next up, we have JFABC. And this was, the suggestion was to remove a no-longer-relevant legal reference and then add a cross-reference to JF, which is school admissions. So it looks like those two suggestions are on, reflected in our draft.
Hold on. Did we just delete school admissions?
All right. Hold on. We just got rid of JF. So hold on.
We did.
Nope.
So you could put.
We got rid of JFE1.
Yes. JFABC is currently on.
Yeah. So.
No, I know, but we just.
We didn't get rid of JF.
We got rid of JC.
You didn't get rid of JF.
Hold on. We got rid of JFE1.
Oh, but there's a JF.
There's a policy JF.
Thank you. I'm just confirming. Thank you. That might bring you.
Okay.
Got rid of JCA and JC.
Alphabet soup.
I also have to laugh because this one.
This is just the tip.
Okay. This is for people watching. We really are rattling this off. So this one is also called school admissions, but there's a JF called school admissions.
Yeah. So that's why we're, yes, that's why we're deleting that one.
Got it. I need to reopen the manual. Right. Bio name.
That's the proper way.
How many books do we have this?
It's like a thousand pages.
Okay. All right. So JF, so then, that's it.
So on JFABC, we need to add and affirmed.
Yes. Review and affirm.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, that'll happen.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So let me carefully just check the agenda and make sure that we covered them all.
Sorry. There was one more in the notes.
No, there isn't. Where?
Okay. Not on today's list, just in the notes from last time. Okay. Thank you.
Yes. But I think we're still working on that one.
Got it. Yep. Run by other, okay. Got it.
I think we still have to fix that ACA. Okay.
So.
So we're just.
I am going to make a motion to, to revisit file ACA at a future meeting date. Can I get a second?
Second, Delica.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And next, I'm making a motion to delete files JC, JCA, and JFE1.
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, I make a motion to approve AC, which is also JB, JEB, and JFABC.
Can you say that again?
Yep.
Say that list again.
File AC, which is also JB.
Got it. Yep. Okay.
File JEB.
Okay. Wait. Hold on. Yes. I need to look correctly.
And file JFABC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Did you say ACA?
ACA, we're moving to.
That's gotta just, it needs to be fixed.
Oh.
Yep. We'll see ACA again. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Perez, and thank you to Nancy and to Jackie for all of the work on this. And we know it's continuing. We're making progress.
Yeah.
All right. Any, did you have anything else that you wanted to mention? Any, did you have anything else that you wanted to mention, Carol's here?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, we appreciate you. Uh, next up, strategic plan, presentation and vote to accept, Dr. Cabral?
Thank you, okay, so.
Should we move?
You will, in a minute, they're going to get set up. So we have.
Do we need to move?
As, in a minute, yeah. As we've been discussing for quite some time now, we have been working for over a year on our successor strategic plan, and we have the plan itself to present to you this evening. We want to make sure that, or I want to make sure that we thank at the beginning, and then again at the end, all of the many, many people that took part in this. We had a great representation on our committee, again, you'll see that in the presentation, and I have asked team members to come here this evening to help present that, in, not in the order of presentation necessarily, but we have teacher extraordinaire from R.O., Mrs. Lewis, Heather Lewis, we have our distinguished law professor here, Carol's Perez, Director of DEIA, who has been helping you with the policies, the Assistant Superintendent of Easton Middle, Assistant Principal of Easton Middle School, Stephanie Santos, the Principal of Oliver Ames High School, Kelly Kavanaugh, and Director of Student Services, Craig Davidson, and I may chime in, but I want to give them the opportunity to present, and so I would only ask, there are other people in this room that were on the committee, and so I would just ask, if you don't mind, at the very end, give an opportunity to talk about your experience with the process, and/or if you want to make any commentary on the final product. So with that, if you would like to sit in the audience, we have just a short, relatively short presentation for you, to make sure that everyone's up to date on how this came about, the process we used, what the final product is, and then we will, very soon, starting in January, we are going to be launching this, if you will, very widely, very publicly, and so we're excited to share this with the school committee. We did share this with all of the members of the staff at our most recent Professional Development Day, and Mr. Davidson, please take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. We are excited to be here tonight to share with you our strategic plan. We wanted to share first what a strategic plan is all about. It's really the five-year vision for a school district, to set goals for themselves, especially around student outcomes. So you can see a little bit about the why behind it, and what we use it for, and what it does is it takes in many stakeholder feedback on how we can get from where we are today and into a five-year future vision for our district. We're going to go over today how we got there, the process as a whole, who was a part of it, and really our three main areas of focus over the next five years for the school district.
So just briefly, two of you who participated in the committee, who participated on the strategic planning team, I think what's most important to point out is the varied members of the committee, of the team, both educators, administrators, community members, we have parents participate, Marvel, our student, who participated on the strategic planning team, and really gave us an opportunity, this team came together to, we had some really hearty discussions there, and we were able to share ideas, perspectives, and kind of have significant dialogue, and come back to them again and again, but it gives you a snapshot of sort of the roles that were represented on the, on the team.
And to be clear, we didn't have 10 people on the committee, there were many more, these are the roles that were represented.
Part of the, the process that we went through was the Planning for Success Model, where we followed the DESI model that was created in 2013. We had a guide from the department who worked with our school district, it was actually my second time working with this individual in my career, and it was an awesome process. What you can see here is kind of the plan that we followed. The first thing we really did was create the plan. We spent a considerable amount of time collecting not only our district's data that we have through some of the platforms we use, but we used DESI feedback, a lot of the information that we shared with them, a lot of current trends. We took into consideration over 200, I think it was 220 different data points that we really drove the conversations for our team and the members, and it was, it was a great part of the process. From there, we spent a nice amount of time living in the future. We all acted like we were in 2029, and we were talking about what our, our ideal school district vision was, and what we would like to see happening in the day-to-day processes of our school. Then from there, we started a backward design model, how are we going to get there? What were we going to do from 2024 all the way to 2029 to see what needed to be done in that time? From there, we had to align our systems, really how we can envision reaching those goals. How we do that is really from the superintendent down, we look at the goals of the superintendent, and then make sure that our administrative team has our goals aligned with the superintendent's goals. From there, the administrator shared their educational goals in two-year cycles with their staff, so everybody's working in unison all the way through the superintendent and school committee on what the ideal focus is, aligning with our school strategic plan. From there, we really wanted feedback in leveraging multiple items and stakeholders. So everything from individual feedback to bigger items such as budgets, grants, how are we utilizing each piece of that to make sure that we're reaching our goals at the end? And now, hopefully after tonight, we'll really be in the implementation mode of how we're going to use our action items for each year to get to our five-year goals. Part of that is also redesigning the plan if it does not work out from year to year. Sometimes things happen, like a pandemic, that throws you for a loop, so you might reach your technology goals a little bit sooner than other goals, but it might set some others back. So we're really excited here tonight to talk about what it's going to look like and how we're going to implement those goals.
This, excuse me, this slide really aligns with what Mr. Davidson just spoke about, but gives you the timeline of the process that we worked with and on. It's been just over one year. We started meeting in November of '23, started with that full team, and started with myself volunteering to participate and having that desire to be a part back in October of 2023. For about five months, we worked as a full team, would be full team, and then the leadership team would meet, and then come back, and would once again meet as a full strategic team, and proceeded through those different steps of envisioning 2029, as Mr. Davidson said, then working on our objectives and initiatives during that time, and beginning the action steps. Then approximately from April to June, what we had worked on, we shared with the varied stakeholders. We accepted, or it was reviewed and feedback was received, and then additional action items were determined, and then August or October, the leadership team worked together to review, align, and complete action steps, which brings us to, in November, when we presented, part of the presentation was to the teachers, faculty within the district, and then today, this evening here with school committee as well.
This slide really shows all the work over that course of a year, it is only two pages long, but it, it starts to hyperlink in many areas, and we're going to jump into what it means, but these are the two documents that you will see most. This will lead you to what the work is, and we're going to talk about what the vision, mission, equity statement, and objectives are on the next slide.
So as part of the strategic planning process, we review our vision and mission statement, which we have always had as, as a district, but we update it to meet our new goals. So the difference between the two statements, the vision is like our vision, what do, what do we see ourselves in the future, what do we expect our students to accomplish and achieve with our support in their time in Easton Public Schools? And then the mission is like, actually, what are, what are our commitments to this community? So these were reviewed by the whole team, and then the leadership team of the district did spend a, a good amount of time wordsmithing them to make sure that they really did use the language that we believe matches what our vision and mission are for our district. So I'm not going to read them out loud to you, but encourage you just to, to look through them, and you're going to see as we move through the goals, that many of the pieces of language in our action steps are reflected in these two statements.
So I'm sure you all have heard me say, time and time again, that equity is the table which everything sits on, and we couldn't have a strategic plan without having an equity statement. And this equity statement has been worked on for the last two years, and has gone through many different stakeholder groups, and what was a very long document was synthesized to these two statements that you see, and then our commitments at the bottom. We wanted them to be practical and to be a guide. So every decision that is made, you should be able to look back at our commitments, and are we honoring our commitments? And are we listening to the voices and stakeholders of this?
I'll, I'll speak for a moment about our first objective, which is teaching and learning, which is really my core, where I am every day, and sometimes into the evenings and weekends. So, but I'll just speak, our first objective is to develop and implement culturally responsive strategies and comprehensive systems, with our goal being to fulfill the individual needs of each, each student, I think that term, each, individual student, and fostering their active participation in their learning, was our first objective, and we determined some strategic initiatives, being that we will, and some of these have actually already sort of started, I know this from our curriculum, that's been coming into place and that we can work with every day, but that our pre-K through 12th grade curriculum that we'll be implementing regularly, updating, rigorous and robust programs, using the understanding by design format, similar to how we envisioned our school district in 2029, and working backwards, same thing in our day-to-day planning with our curriculum. And then as well, our second initiative was to implement a cohesive, inconsistent, multi-tiered system of support, pre-K through 12th grade. This is a framework for how do we support each and every one of our students in our schools? And the third initiative under our first objective is to enhance teaching and learning through the targeted application of culturally responsive and student-centered instruction that focuses on authentic learning experiences. So once again, we see how, we really worked hard to, we had a question, was this piece separate, or was it intertwined within everything in our strategic plan? And through discussion, we did, it was intertwined, it was a component, and a basis really for all that we were doing.
It's also interesting that you pointed out the word each, because it was something we spent a lot of time on. If you've ever been part of a committee, especially a large committee, and you're coming up with public documents that you really want to use to guide your work, because we will be using this to guide our work, to hold ourselves accountable for other people, to hold us accountable as well, and a lot of times we were using the words "all students", we want to make sure all students can access, we want to make sure all students, and we realized, you know, again, words, words really matter, and we want to make sure that people don't think, well, all, you know, it's like most kids, we very intentionally spent time in pointing out it should be each child, the individual, no one falls between the cracks, if you will, or isn't served to their fullest potential. And so it looks like these very concise statements, but I assure you, the meaning was very carefully thought out, with multiple different lenses, and I think really gets to the heart of our intentions and our vision as a district, as we heard from all of the many constituency groups that very generously gave us their feedback on these things.
And I, I think it's important to frame the process a little bit right now, how we got here too. You know, we had over 12 meetings during the course of last school year, and so you look at really the, the three focus points that we get to around the objectives, and then the initiatives under it, that was meetings upon meetings, working together, taking all the stakeholder feedback, all the data points, and coming up with the strategic objectives and initiatives that will guide us in the work we do. What you do not see here, and the reason that they're hyperlinked in blue, is our leadership team then has action items for each initiative on how we're going to get there over the next five years. And we spent a considerable amount of time on really identifying how to break down some of those barriers of things that could get in the way, and that's part of the whole reverse model that we used. You know, how do we use our budget to make sure that we're getting from point A to point B in some of these initiatives? What kind of grants can we use? What kind of structures do we already have in place to move this work? What meetings do we already have scheduled that we can incorporate into them to communicate to our staff and our families on how we're going to get there? So you'll see the document, you'll see what we go through for each of the buckets that we fell into, but there's a lot of behind-the-scenes items that we'll be working on over the next few years that we will also be communicating.
If you could just stay here for one second, to, to have this great point before about connecting this to UBD curriculum, this perfectly follows the three stages of UBD curriculum. You start with your, the essence, the concepts and skills that are very important, these are the non-negotiables that we all have to hold one another to. Then you start with, how are you going to assess that? What is, what is the product that's going to happen as a result? And then the third step is the learning plan, how are you going to get to this? And that's what all of these links are, they're full documents of timelines, action steps, persons, or groups responsible for achieving them.
So one of our goals is also, is around communication and bringing in the community. And as you all have seen through just this presentation, we wanted to make sure that this document was accessible to all, not just employees of the school department, which sometimes school departments use a lot of acronyms and people don't know what it means. We want to make sure that anyone in the community can pick up this document and understand what Easton is aiming to do, and also with our communication, our new communication platform, like Parent Square, making our buildings, our events more accessible to our families by integrated translations, that's one of the many action items, but also bringing in and highlighting the diversity that is already in Easton, and sort of creating a platform and making it not just a one-day event or an evening, but the everyday culture of what Easton Public Schools is.
And by the way, if you could just go back for one second, I just have to go off on this tangent, these photographs are, they look like stock photos, these are our beautiful children, so all of these photos are from our, our schools. I love the action in that one.
So another objective, this is one that I'm really passionate about, I was really happy to work with this section particularly, but it is to foster a culture of equity and inclusivity where every individual feels safe, valued, and supported, ensuring the social, emotional, and physical well-being of our entire school community. So this is for everybody here that's part of our community, that extends to families even. So by do, in order to do that, we have these initiatives to regularly analyze data, procedures, policies, and systems. We want to make sure that we're prioritizing inclusive values and beliefs, nurturing a safe, supportive environment, ensuring equity and access to resources, and you can, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but you know, it, it again ties right back to our, our vision, our mission, our equity statement. And then, of course, we'll update security infrastructure, and, and you'll see that a big thing that, a theme throughout this too, outside of making sure that we are reaching each student and each person in the community, is also the consistency across the school. So we'll be doing a lot to make sure that, you know, K to 12, the student experiences, you know, a similar structure. So, this campus, you leave on it.
And a great example of that was last week, the colors.
Last colors?
Yeah. Which we had PK to 12, which is very cool.
So this slide.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to say, the, so we presented this to our staff as well at the Professional Development Day last month, and it was an interactive presentation, which was fun to do with them, and the, these QR codes were up after each initiative, each objective, and staff were able to use their phones to, well, first we had them speak to each other, discuss, and then use their phones to submit what they were thinking about as far as action steps under each initiative, each objective. So it was really great to see the staff come together, speak to each other in these smaller groups, and then they were able to visually see what each other were thinking, because it went up on like a Word map, and if they agreed, they could type in the same thing and it would get bigger, and then that led to fruitful discussion from everybody there as a whole, which was a really great process to witness too.
Yep, those were shared with principals, so that they could initiate conversations with their staff, and those conversations then came back to the leadership team. And those, uh, conversations then came back to the leadership team and we used them to, uh, make sure that they were all represented in the action steps that we had on all of those links that you see. So now, we would like to encourage, not only the members up here, uh, but even those in the audience that participated. We would encourage you to, if you are willing, let us know what you thought of the Planning for Success model. The, uh, process that we used, it is different than what we've used in past planned developments. And/or your takeaways from the strategic plan itself, having your own experience, being involved in all of the ancillary comments we've given about our experiences. We would welcome you to add to that if you would like.
Do members of the audience want to, Lauren or Marvel want to speak to your experience having been part of the committee and attending meetings?
Um, I really enjoyed being a part of this, um, this group, um, this working team. It, it's so true when you say that every word matters because I can recall being in several different stakeholder meetings where we would, uh, ha- ha- hem and ha over a word and, and its placement in the statement. And, um, and if that was really truly what we were trying to say and trying to accomplish. I, I really, um, appreciate the format of it, I, I think it's really, um, easy to follow. And, um, and being just a quick, you know, even though it has the hyperlinks, but being a quick one-page, two-pager, I, I think is really, um, is really going to be a win on, on our end of sharing it with the community because people are going to be able to read something that is so small, or so concise, rather than something that is, um, you know, fifty pages long.
But I think similar to what we were saying about the PACE committee information, you can go as deep as you'd like. There's plenty of information, plenty of documentation that went with it, plenty of supporting documents. So, uh, people can dive in as much or as little as they would like.
Can I ask questions? Yes, okay. Um, so thank you for your time, I think this is great. I have a couple of questions regarding the equity statement. The focus of a lot of this is regarding students, which is amazing, but what about faculty or, you know, teachers and staff? Because the second bullet on the equity statement talks about making sure students are valued, but what about staff and teachers, was that discussed?
Yeah, uh, yes. Uh, we talked about that in, uh, the third bullet, which was hiring and retention, making sure that, uh, the word each, what didn't just apply to students, it also applied to our staff, and it applies to our family. Uh, so we did make sure that we considered all of our stakeholders.
I think, um, it would be important to make it clear regarding teachers and staff because they are very valued in town. I want to make sure that their opinion is validated, they feel like they are welcome along all of that, because they are crucial to this community. And so I want to make sure that they have a voice, they feel like they have a voice in their family. And I think that maybe just adding, you know, teachers and staff to that question might be important. I don't know if some teachers here might have talked about that. Uh, further my other question was regarding the fourth bullet, which was hiring practices. So my question for that is how are you going to control who applies for positions? And then the second question is if you have two candidates, one meets your equity statement but they're not qualified, one doesn't meet your equity statement but they are qualified, who are you going to hire based on that situation?
So I will answer your first question. Um, you ultimately can't control who applies. Um, what you can do is, uh, make your efforts, uh, sort of in, so this past year we went to the Merck, uh, Recruitment Fair, which is huge, that's at BU. But we also hosted the MPDE, uh, Job Fair, which is for diverse candidates. So you can put yourself out there in different avenues to attract different candidates. Now can you make them apply? Of course not. Um, and what I will say to your second question is that, uh, no decisions are made in silos. Uh, there are hiring committees, and I can assure you that Easton Public Schools hires the best candidate.
But then have you a violation of your equity statement if you hire somebody that doesn't meet your, your diversity goals?
No, because if someone doesn't serve our students, then we're not going to hire them.
That's the hard part about that question. That bullet is the fact that one, you can't control, even you asked to try and attract,
One hundred percent.
Control who is going to apply, but also you don't want anyone to feel like questioned that they were, that you, that you didn't hire somebody because they weren't qualified. I know you guys may get in a committee, but that's something that I think that you potentially could get questioned up. Did you violate the policy because you hired this person? You are hiring someone because they're the best candidate. You don't want to deal with whatever, you know, happened that might happen. And that's, I think it's just a tough one to control, it's a tough one to, you know, you might violate it without even your own knowledge by hiring somebody. So I, I just think the wording for that one, just to be careful because you don't want someone to, you know, question the hire.
Yeah, and, um, I think that's also why we are, um, aligning our hiring practices as well. The more uniform your practice is, the least bias can happen. And, um, I assure you and the Easton community that we are certainly working on that.
Um, I was just going to say that like, in all honesty, going into this, I was kind of like, oh, I'm definitely going to be here for like a performative thing, like, oh, we had a student on here. But, um, when I was walking in, and when I was walking in, like, um, and we were in groups, like, I especially remember like Ms. Neely and Ms. Kavanaugh, like, they'd be like urging me to like speak up and they'd be like, no, like, we really do want to hear you. And even when I was talking, especially like when Mr. Davidson, when we were talking, he'd be like, oh, and he'd be asking me questions and be like prompting like, what do you think, like, the student aspect of this would be or that and that. And I truly do think that at the end of the day, this is kind of like beyond what we had, or at least what I had envisioned for a product. And I really do think it all was very successful.
Thank you, Marvel.
Um, I got to be part of the process as well and I appreciated the, the structure of it. Um, because coming up with what you want your school district to be five years from now is this big. And to distill this down to this, uh, is, is an incredible amount of work. And I, I still have, I was sorting through some files recently, I have pages and pages and pages of handwritten notes and, and typed notes. And then, you know, we sat through and participated in hours and hours of meetings with conversation and debate and, uh, pushing and pulling each other. So it was a, it just a very, very robust process. And I, I always appreciate the ability, um, as somebody who's, you know, I'm a parent of the school committee, but I'm not in the schools, working with our educators daily. And so to be able to sit at those tables with our classroom teachers and support staff and, and building leadership, it, it just, I just always walk away very impressed and grateful with, with who we have and knowing that our, our students and their families are in the best hands with folks who have nothing but their best interest at heart. And, and I think for, you know, the parent representatives who were able to participate as well, to have that view is, uh, is something very, um, unique and special. So, um, thank you for having such an open collaborative process and inviting as many stakeholders in as possible. And I really feel that the voices of non-educators were, um, were really valued and drawn out and are reflected in this, in this, uh, final product, so.
Chairperson, sorry, I couldn't, um, agree with you more about the stakeholder voice. That's probably the most powerful part of the process, I think. The next slide, one of the first slides showed the ten different stakeholder groups that were, um, represented. Uh, now you see who was part of that. Uh, but part of the model or the focus of the model is to not give too much power to the administration, to teachers, to stu- it was really a balanced approach. Um, and this was my second time working with the same consultant. And, uh, her focus is really to create that level playing field for all, especially when we created the norms at the beginning of the working group. Um, so it was wonderful to sit in a group with you and with Marvel and so many others to have these conversations and really hear, uh, the experiences of our parents, of our community members, of our school committee members, and our staff. Uh, so to be able to develop this plan with so many stakeholder voices really gives us a chance to see a vision, uh, for five years from now that will really meet the needs of our community.
My, my question, what's been the feedback from the teachers and staff on the plan? Positive? Because the one thing that stood out to me was the fact that, as I said, our teachers are very valued here. They are a huge help to our town, but they were missed in some areas and they have to come up with statements. So how, how has the feedback been from the teachers and staff? Positive?
So, yes, the, the feedback that we received during the professional development day was positive towards the plan. Um, the plan really does focus on student outcomes, um, and where we're going to go with that. Uh, what you might not see in that plan that, uh, was listed today is really the action items and the conversations we had around how we were going to get our staff to a place, uh, to be able to deliver those, uh, intangibles to our students. The other piece of that is, and I think, um, Director Perez really started to go down this path when she was presenting, uh, her area that she worked on with her group, was really around that sense of belonging and it's for all. Uh, we were very strategic, uh, I think someone in the crowd had said earlier, around the language we used in the strategic plan on how we're going to meet the needs of our school community. That school community takes up so many different stakeholder groups. Uh, we had teachers, um, paraprofessionals, a nurse, we had so many different stakeholders, uh, being able to share that. And then we took the, the feedback that we received, it really created the action items and the objectives around that. Uh, so we believe that the plan that we presented to the school committee tonight incorporates everybody's voice that was at the table. It really gives us a platform to plan the next five years for our school district around this vision.
I think one of the important things to highlight is, one of our homework assignments was to go back to our respective groups and get information. So for example, you'll see, um, the DEIA community groups, the superintendent advisory. Um, I know Marvel spoke to a group of students and all of that information was collected. I'm sure teachers went back and spoke to other teachers, uh, to make sure that their voices were incorporated, into this very, very long process, but, yes, thank you for your question.
I had a, sorry, excuse me, I don't know why my voice just said that. Um, I had a, a couple of comments and just a, a question or two. Um, I do appreciate very much the very thoughtful language and all of the hours of time and effort that went into this. I, when you read it, the thoughtful language stands out. So to someone who wasn't in the middle of the process, um, as I read it, it was very clear to me how intentional the language was. Um, and I think it's, I really like some of the call-outs, like when we, when you called out safety, specifically calling out social, emotional, and physical, like those things are so important in this time period. So I really, really value that. Um, two questions that I had around it was just from the exercise, which of these items do you think will be the hardest to achieve? What's the biggest gap from where we are today to where we want to be? Um, and then my second question was around just how we'll measure the success for ourselves? How do, how do we know that we've actually hit these things?
So measuring the success, that comes from the action steps. They're all actionable, um, items with deliverables. And so we have the act- I'm sorry? Oh. They're not smarty goals. They're, uh, actionable items with timelines on them. Uh, as Craig had said earlier, our last plan, we actually completed in 2019. And so we don't know what happens sometimes to derail that. And so it is a living document, and as we did with that plan, we made many adjustments along the way. And so as we see that something is accomplished, we don't say, oh, good, we're all done with that one, we don't have to worry about it for like eight years from now. We always want to leverage on what we've been able to accomplish to take it further. And if there are items that we don't finish, we will make sure, when we reassess, does that need further attention? Do we need further resources? Does it, does it need, uh, further action steps? We will add those as well. So they're not finite, and so in that way, it is flexible enough that we can make sure, um, that it's constantly moving forward. And in that sense, I wouldn't say any of them are necessarily more difficult to accomplish than others. They're all in different levels of achievement. And once we get into something, we might think it's going to be very straightforward, or it may be very difficult, but once we do it, we might find that we have a different experience and we might need to make those adjustments. So it's kind of hard to say if there are any that are, represent bigger gaps than others. The intention of all of them was for them to truly take five years to come to full fruition. And so that's the lens we used on all of them. The action steps, some of them are a month long, some of them will be done at the end of this school year. Those are very variable, uh, extremely variable. But the actual plan, all of those were done with a lens of that being accomplished at the end of five years. So that's the, sort of the, the, uh, measure that we used of when we think each of them will come to full fruition.
That's helpful, I think it, it would be powerful, and I will go through the action steps to make sure I understand them better. Um, but I think it would be powerful to also identify ways in which we can confirm from the community, the, the students, the teachers, those who are in the community, that they are feeling that level of safety at the end, that they, we have made measurable progress on it, that we are seeing less of certain types of incidents that indicate that they don't feel safe. Like the ways in which we can look at the data that helps us see whether or not we're making this. So all of the action steps are important, and then are they having the impact is something that I would really love to see.
Well, like Craig had said, there were over 200 data points that we used to come to the, uh, to come to our current reality and frame that. And so those and more would be used to measure the trajectory of achievement on those goals.
And just for example, just to kind of give you a, a deep dive into how we get there. Um, when you look at an action item, we'll talk about sense of belonging and security and safety. One of the questions that we added, uh, to our YHS survey data last fall or winter was around the feeling of safety when a, a child enters the school. We asked that seven through 12. Um, we asked, uh, questions around sense of belonging. And so when you look at, when we ask those questions and have those data points, we were able to share those data points out with the entire committee when we did the deep dive into our, um, uh, data across the district. What we're going to have at the end of the five years is multiple data sets. But we're going to have the students that are in seventh grade, when this plan is ending, are going to be juniors or seniors in high school. And we're going to actually have three sets of data to track the progress that we've made over time, which then is in our action items on how we're going to get there and see if the progress was made.
Awesome, that was the specifics that I was starting to get into of just like those things that help us. And I know there's more than just the survey, right? There are several key ones that you're looking at, and those are the, those are the exciting ways in which we can confirm that the people in the community are feeling everything that you're putting so much effort into achieving.
And I think once you get in there and you click the hyperlink, get some more into it, I'm a visual person, so I, I feel you. But when you get in there, you'll see exactly, uh, our measures of, uh, how we're measuring our success.
Lauren, you had a question?
Yes. Can you share, um, how this will be communicated and shared with the public?
Yes. We, uh, sorry. T-shirts, sweatshirts? We have a buzz line for that, but, uh, we are-
Can you get us a grant for that?
We'll take donations. Uh, we, we actually did get together, we actually spent some time this summer even talking in the leadership team about how we're going to publicize this. We have between now and the beginning of January to, what, now that it's sort of formalized with your, uh, hopeful acceptance this evening, to think about what our, uh, relations plan is going to be. Unfortunately, one of the things we talked about a lot in this whole process was that was one of the things that got sidelined with the last plan. We had come up with, we came up with a hashtag, we came up with different, uh, logos, we came up with ideas for posters, and of course, the pandemic got in the way of that. So that is something that, that's the more, I don't want to say easier because I'm going to curse us, but- but it's, it's the more straightforward part of this. And what we hope and the reason why our core values, which isn't on here right now, but that's another component, is the core values and belief statements that we have and our equity commitments and our three strategic initiatives. These are things that everybody should be able to know what they are, have heard of them, know that there's only three of them, get an idea that one is about teaching and learning, one's about communication, one's about unity, have a sense of that because we want to use that in our daily interactions with students, with parents. Why are we doing something? Well, let's go back and take a look at why we're doing this. If somebody is not, we do it with our students. If somebody is not meeting expectations of behavior, we might say, well, that's, that's a violation of the core values that we really believe in as a district and we bring them back to that. So there are many opportunities and ways that we're hoping that we are going to publicize this and see it everywhere throughout our buildings. We got as far as our vision last plan in all of our buildings and then things kind of got sidelined. But I'm hoping, I don't want to phrase it this way. I'm hoping that you will be sick of seeing this stuff by the end of the five-year plan in a good way, if that's possible.
Anything else, Nancy?
Yeah, one thing. Thank you very much for all your work from everybody that did this because it is a lot of work. But I want to go back to what you said about the students and looking at the four, the four things, the exam and systems and practices. And the last line, safety for all students. Personally, I think it should be safety for everybody. In this day and age, students, I know, you know, I don't think, I don't think educators always feel safe. And administration, I don't think they always feel, I mean, with everything that happens, I know I'm being a pessimist here, but leadership and voice opportunities to ensure that, I would say that everyone has a voice, all EPS. You were talking earlier about each, each, and I saw every student for all, every individual, each student for all. It's all, you know, it's in here all over the place. Each student, all families, every individual. I don't know why we can't just put every individual in there, but that's another thing. And then on the reflective curriculum, ensure instructional materials and classroom environments reflect the diversity of, shouldn't it reflect the diversity of everybody? Like as a teacher, you bring to the classroom some of your own history, heritage. So shouldn't we value that too? So I, I mean, I will, I'm, I, and as you said, this is a living document. So maybe things can change. And I know you were talking about wordsmithing and all that. But I just feel like, you know, everybody, it's not, it is. Education is about the students, but it's about the people that bring the education to the students, too. And then the people that hire the faculty.
This is our strategic vision for our students. We're all here to serve our students together.
Okay.
So when, for example, as a teacher, when I was a teacher, there were a lot of projects that I really enjoyed doing with my students. And then, you know, I taught for 20 years. So after a few years, they would get a little bit stale. I wanted to do them again. If they didn't resonate with my students, I need to change them.
Right.
Because I'm here to serve the students. I make, the, the whole reason for my being is to be there and help the students achieve. And so this is our commitment to our community of how we're going to all together as a team, serve their children as citizens of our community and of our school community. And so of course, I think everything, a lot of things that we said this evening and our actions and what we invest in all show that we have great value for all of our educators. But as a group and as the educational team of this district, what we're pledging to do together, which is why Teacher Voice was such a big important part of this, especially the action steps, this is what we're committing to do together on behalf of the people we serve, which is our students.
Okay. So it's Easton Public Schools District Plan Overview, which focuses on the students and what they are going to achieve in the five years.
That's why we're here, is to serve the students.
Just making sure, okay.
And we also serve staff, of course. That goes without saying. But our strategic plan as a district is for how we're all going to advance the, the vision of the graduate and the student as they go through our system.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Can I, can I, I'm just, I'm just from a, just from a meeting protocol standpoint, this item, it's, it's not a public hearing. So I just want, can you state your name and address so that we have that for the record? Thank you. Okay.
Do you have a lot of these same policies for your teachers and staff? So that, you know, like an equity statement and commitments for them? Because if you think about it, you as the school committee and superintendent, you're an employer and you have hundreds of employees. You're probably the biggest employer in the state in the whole of town in Easton. So do you have these same statements for your staff so that they know that, you know, do you have like DEIA committees? Do you have, I mean, you have, do you have, so they feel that they have a voice? And like Nancy said, that they feel like they're, you know, safe and all of that? Because that would help solve some of the questions.
Sure. We have, we include staff on, in everything that we do. We include them on hiring committees. We include them in our curriculum work. We include them on our professional development plans. We include them on, if you name a committee, their, the staff is on it. We don't do anything with our staff. We are a team. We do everything together. So this is not, this is not, we have distributed leadership even with our budget. The staff has access. Department chiefs have access to their own budgets. They tell us what they need. Our budget process starts with the staff before it even gets to us. Everything we do as a district is as a team.
And some of the things that we have started for, well, first let me say, staff and, and adults across the board are protected by various laws. But one of the things we have started are affinity groups. And so that is for our staff to create a sense of belonging. And one, oh, I just-
And I just have to also shout out to our phenomenal human resources director, who is a very client-focused customer service person. We are here, we all know we're here to serve our students. I always talk about an inverted pyramid. And we are here and we lift up everyone else in the district. And so I, I, this should not be seen because we are committed to our work and our job of educating the students of Easton. It shouldn't be seen as anyone's left out. They were part of the process of creating this entire document.
And I'm not sure if you heard earlier, but the two staff members who were presenting on NEAS actually said, and we thank our PD committee for giving us time during the PD day to work on this. That is also staff wellness so that they don't have to go home and do that. And even on our PD day, during breakup time or lunchtime, our director of human resources actually had a bunch of vendors for 403B available for our staff to answer any of their questions. I know, I know nothing about 403B, so I welcome that. But, yes.
And I'll, I'll add, I know we were discussing policy earlier without getting too far into the details of the policy because this was our, for all of them, at least the second reading and we're the ones reading it. But a lot of the policies, actually the policy work that we've been doing recently is updating and making sure that our policies around things like non-discrimination, et cetera, are, are, you know, adhere to all current laws and reflect regulations. And those apply to staff as well as students. So we do have formal policies, yes.
There's a whole section.
Yeah, a whole.
Right now, we're working on section J, which is actually students, but there's a whole section for adults also, which, stay tuned.
Okay. Any other questions from Franklin? I know, I, I know that this is your first time being in our, in our big meeting, but I wanted to invite you to, if you have any feedback, don't feel like, I don't want you to feel put on the spot, but if you have any feedback on seeing the plan for the first time, if you'd like to add anything, please do so.
I don't have anything specific. I'm just kind of absorbing everything. A lot of new information. I think it's all very cool and very, you know, good to know like the district is working on so many things and improving continuously.
We kind of talked about this. He's just being humble, I guess. But how do you envision like students interacting with this document? Like, because it is so student-based, but like if I wasn't a part of it, I don't think I would be, in all honesty, again, I don't think I'd be looking at the plan, if that makes sense. So how do you see students like using this document?
And that's one of our, that's one of our initiatives is along with the equity statements.
Actually, one of the action steps in the communication piece is about the communication of the plan.
Yes, and, and elevating student voice. You and a group of your friends did a fabulous presentation last week. That is part of our strategic plan, elevating student voices to have the opportunity. We're the vessel for you all. So tell us what you want and, and we'll try to make it happen. And that, in layman's terms, is really what one of the initiatives is.
So can I ask, do you think it would be valuable if this were presented to, you know, class officers or student council or some of the other established school leadership groups that already exist? To, you know, to have them get kind of direct, you know, from, from administrators? Like, here's the plan we put together. Because I think there are some channels there that may already exist with some student leaders to at least start there. But obviously, we want to make sure that it's relevant for everybody, even if they're not in a leadership position. But maybe some thought, maybe that's something we could get some further feedback on from you if you think that would be a good use of time or not.
I don't think, like, I don't think it should be like, I don't think we have like, we should have like an assembly and present the whole entire thing and all of its links and all that. But I do think, no, but I do think that's like a good idea because I feel like maybe this could, you know, catalyze more leadership or even just more student voice. Because like even just this idea, like I got to sit with all of these officials, like it was also very humbling and enriching. That's like, oh, like I get, like it was very, I think they were very meaningful interactions and I got, a whole new world is open to me in regards to like administration perspective and just all the like perspectives in general. And I think every student should have like a moment like that where it's like, oh, like, you know, I, because from, just before, if I'm just sitting here, I'm like, I can complain about all the things I don't like about the school. But then if you go and you sit with like Ms. Kavanaugh, for instance, you see the reasoning behind everything that happens. And I think that's really crucial for like, you know, students to understand. And I think that also, this will even go into the student update. Like I think at the middle school, especially like when they had their meetings with their, like with their administrators and like Mr. Carroll and all of that, they really got clarity on some of the things that, you know, they were pushing for. And then Mr. Carroll was like, oh, like here's the reasoning and here's this, this, this. And then there was some sort of consensus at the end.
And we, we would appreciate real-time feedback on that. If you see posters going up or you see people referring to it or there are quotes around it or different things are happening, teachers make reference to it and it's either falling flat or something, kids are talking about something or you find it as a good vehicle to ask questions. Well, hold on, the strategic plan says this. We don't feel like this initiative really does that. Can you help us understand how it fits that? If that's useful for you, let us know, we'll do more of it. If you find that something might be falling flat or people aren't really paying attention to something, we'd rather invest our energy and our time somewhere else where they will. And only you guys will, will know that and be able to tell us authentically. So we appreciate your feedback.
Thank you.
I heard that piece of the work from the elementary level. So when I was participating in the strategic team, I had an aha moment. And I said, aha. I work on my professional practice goal at the beginning of every year, my student learning goal. And I could see where it had funneled down to me, looking at those two components of my upcoming year and see how it had come from the school improvement plan, which had then come from the strategic plan here, this longer plan, which had ultimately come right from the people before me, the educators, the school committee members, administrators, the community members, who developed that plan. So I think to your question, so I don't sit in front of my third graders and say, third graders, we're working on my student learning goal. You know, that doesn't happen, but it is a component of my instruction throughout the whole year and my professional practice goal, which ultimately are driven by not entirely, but from the strategic plan so that our students are really participating, even though they don't know it or there hasn't been an assembly or my little, you know, my eight, nine-year-olds, that they are kind of living it in our classroom with our instruction and with their teachers. So I think that's an important, absolutely an important piece to that question.
One of the things I've been thinking about Marvel and Franklin is that, so just like in any business or organization, you create these documents and they guide your decisions. So when the leadership team of the district sits around and makes decisions, we go back to our strategic plan as our guiding document. What I'd like to do is see our four class executive boards, our executive board for student council, all of those have a good understanding of this and get into the practice of like, this is how we work as organizational institutions that we use our strategic plan in our decision-making. So as student council plans, like the event they had before homecoming this year, where people could come and check in early who were anxious about it, go get a slice of pizza, like have some quiet time before the crazy of the party started. That meets our strategic plan in terms of like access to all kids, to community events, right? If you guys can help, have her have an understanding of the connection to the things we're doing at our building at this level, it's going to like prepare you for so much post-secondary that you wouldn't experience in other situations, you know? So that's one of my hopes. And even as you're making those decisions and you're saying, okay, here's an event we've had forever. Is there a way we can go back to the strategic plan and, and say, are we, are we following it with this lens? For this particular event, did we actually think about everybody? Is there handicapped accessibility? Is there, was it published widely enough that people would see it or what have you? So to just kind of both reactively and proactively take a look at what you're doing and the idea then is for everything to funnel in the same direction so that together we can move forward to our goals by 2029.
Anything else?
Thank you, everyone, especially for your patience this evening as well.
Thank you.
All righty. So before we move on to the next item on the agenda, we need to vote on this one, yes. Would you like, would somebody like to make a motion then to vote to accept the strategic plan that was presented tonight?
So moved to Luca.
Can I get a second?
Yes, I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. I lost my pen and that's going to, sorry, drive me insane. I have one somewhere. I probably have one back. I have one back.
You got it?
Is this it? That's it. Thank you. Okay. Strategic plan, all right. So next up is discussion and vote to add new banner sponsors to the sponsor list. Dr. Cabral?
As Lynn usually does, she highlighted and read all of the new sponsors for consideration to be on school banners. And she has put the type of the organization as well for your review.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. So it looks like we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. No, great, all right, so nine new names. So Bloom Aesthetics and Wellness, Kristy McDonough Royal Treatment Travel. So I think she's been on, Royal Treatment Travel itself was already listed, but I think it will be somewhere in the name. Convenient MD. Hardy Hardy Rentals, Paul's Custom Detailing, Silco Honda, The Pool Place, Universal Orthopedics and Vitality IV Hydration. So any, any questions, comments, discussion about the additional sponsors?
I have a general question. What is the, the life of these sponsors being approved? Is it indefinitely?
Yeah. A sponsor may be on one year and then maybe not sponsor the next year and then want to come back on the third year. And instead of coming back, they're on this list. That's why Lynn always adds them to the ones that were on prior in case you have a reconsideration of one that you previously approved or we just keep adding to the same bank of sponsors. Does that make sense? I don't, I don't know if I answered your question. You look, I'm not sure I did either.
Sure, I did either, but it's fine.
This, this list is not all active sponsors, but people that have been.
No, I totally understand that. I was just wondering, like.
Yeah, so it's a approval into perpetuity.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, I'll make a motion then to accept the new additions to the banner sponsors list. Can I get a second? Second, Loomis, and all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. And on to our student representative to the school committee update, so Marvel.
Alright, Franklin's gonna start us off.
Alright, um, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is my second year representing the high school on the school advisory board, but my first time actually sitting through a full meeting. So it's been very insightful and to learn a lot about, um, everything, like, I didn't know there was like a whole vision and pace and everything.
Yeah, you had a very dense meeting for your first meeting.
A lot to look into.
Lot of substance tonight.
So to start off, I'm gonna give, um, updates on the high school and the middle school and then I'll pass it off to Marvel. So at high school, I, um, met with Mrs. Kavanaugh earlier this week. Um, there've been a lot of, uh, surveys regarding H block and scheduling, so that'll, uh, be shared more when more data is available. Uh, additionally, there's been, um, uh, I have been working with Mrs. Sweeney and Mrs. Kavanaugh and department heads and other teachers to create, uh, career fair scheduled for March 21st. So if anyone knows, you know, anyone who can come in and give, like, have like a, a little place in the gym to just say what they've been doing, you know, any flyers, anything interactive really for the students to learn more about their career, that would be very helpful. A survey actually went a couple weeks before Thanksgiving break and really all careers are on the table, so there's a very broad interest, trades, medical, law, sports, everything was, um, people said they were interested in. Um, and another big thing has been student council recently finished their work on creating a closet called Take What You Need. So just, uh, for students that, uh, to get essentials for school or home or anything really. And that'll be talked more about on Parents vs. Students Square, more information will be available. But that's been a big initiative for student council. Um, and on the middle school side, um, a lot of, like, the frustrations or concerns have been managed or resolved since the last time. A lot of, uh, students expressed that they wanted more feedback, that they see a lot more feedback at the high schools. So they want to see that in the middle school. And Representative Brendan, Brendan Dolan, doing a good job going to the middle school and he's talking, he talked with, uh, focus groups from students and a lot of them said that they want, um, honesty and they want an accurate picture from the survey, so they would like, you know, animosity. And, uh, they brainstormed a couple questions that Brendan's brought to Prince though, Mr. Carroll, to talk about. And a lot of those center on belonging and kind of creating that school culture, which now I know aligns with the vision as well, so I think that's very important to focus on. And he said that when he gets more news on the surveys, he'll kind of talk about that data as well.
Um, and then we're just gonna jump to Blanch Ames. Blanch Ames, also what's super awesome about them is that the kids, like, you know, it's not, it's not always rainbows over there. So, um, the kids are actually talking about the wit and wisdom and how it's very split where some kids really, really enjoy this time to learning and reading. Um, others think it's just, you know, they start to find it, um, challenging to read for the certain amount of time allotted or even just, um, in general, I mean, I still struggle with reading, so it's perfectly fine. Um, and then, uh, the kindergarten is excited for their upcoming lessons on different countries, which is amazing because, you know, lots of diversity, lots of understanding of culture at such a young age, um, being implemented. And then they also have something called Choice Time. So Choice Time allows students to make their own decisions about how they spend their free time. Um, some popular activities include chess, coloring and games, um, which I really do wish someone taught me chess at such a young age. Um, and yeah, so other than that, um, oh, and actually another important thing was the One Book One School was very successful amongst students. Um, they said that they joined the B S U students, um, they had them come in and read to them and they really, like, go by a chosen book and they really were responsive to that. Um, when asked about their opinions on the program, all the students gave it a 10 out of 10, which is great. So yeah, if you guys have any questions or if you guys have any recommendations for something to look out for in other schools, we'll make sure to do that.
Great, any questions, comments from the committee?
Thank you both.
Thank you, thank you both. I know it's been a long night since we had our meeting, um, prior to this. So we appreciate you guys coming here and I'm sure you probably have homework or other things you need to be doing as well. So I know your day's not over, but we always appreciate the, the direct student perspective that you bring in. Franklin, nice job, yeah, presenting for the first time.
I love it. Okay, alright, great. Uh, next up, schedule of payments. So since the school committee last met, uh, the following warrants have been completed. Uh, let's see, so 023S, 024S, 026S, 027S and 029S. And those were all for routine operating expenses. Next up, public comments. Any members who are here have anything additional to add? Okay, and we have superintendent notes. Dr. Cabral?
I don't have anything for that. Can't wait.
Okay.
It isn't, it's not timely enough to make, extend.
Okay, alright, and our assistant superintendent is not here this evening? Did she have anything that she gave to you to relay? Okay, great, alright, so school committee notes. Uh, who would like to begin today? I know we normally go through in order and then we always feel like.
And I always feel like, yeah.
So.
Kelly.
Shall we let you cover all of the sports?
Whatever, whatever other people would like to say, say, and then I will jump in and cover anything that wasn't covered, so.
You wanna go first?
Um, you go.
Alright.
I'm not organized.
Okay, so I may need help from our students down there. Um, first of all, the Moscato Mile was excellent on that Monday before Thanksgiving. The day was cool, but a great day for running. Uh, the comment from a lot of people was, there were a lot of parents there that day, which normally there aren't, so it must have been my history lesson two weeks ago. And, um, so anyway, and actually Craig Moscato was there, the son of Val Moscato, and he gave out the trophy, so we were talking a bit. But anyway, it was really a nice day and, uh, the kids, I think they had fun, but who knows? Um, also, the day before Thanksgiving, OA had Hall Day, which I believe the seniors won?
Absolutely.
And what was, what was the theme?
We did Monopoly.
Monopoly.
It was really, really good because a lot of students put so much hard work into that.
Yep, so all four classes, you know, did really well. But Powder Puff, though, was won by the juniors.
We don't really talk about.
Okay, we're not gonna talk about that. And the Homecoming Dance, I heard, was a very, a very successful social event. So I'm not sure how many kids go to that, but I know there's a lot. On, um, oh, tonight, congratulations to all those, the four, um, students that got those awards. That's wonderful. December 10th, National Honor Society at the high school here is the induction night. And that is one of my favorites because the kids get up, they get their, um, they get inducted and then they choose a teacher that, um, or someone that they feel influenced them a lot in their education. So it's pretty cool. And on next Friday, not tomorrow, but Friday the 13th, the OA Winter Concert again, one of my favorite evenings, seven o'clock at the high school. Um, and I'll let everybody else take everything else.
More?
I actually have no time.
Alright, alright, so just, um, a few other, um, recent events and upcoming that I just wanted to highlight. Uh, first was that, um, the first D I A meeting of the year was a special presentation by, uh, student Sonia Warwick. Um, and, uh, Marvel and some other students participated in the Beyond Stereotype presentation. So it was a really, really great evening. Um, I, I very much enjoyed the presentation and the workshop style where you interacted with those around you. So, um, it was, I, I got to, you know, meet, uh, one person who I didn't know and we had some really good conversations. So super, really well done, um, and, and kudos to all of the students and their adult mentors who put that together. It's been, um, it's very powerful. The, um, the CPAC had a meeting last night. It was very small. It was just, um, uh, just the officers who attended, but I was able to attend. And, and, uh, we basically spent most of the time discussing pace. So, um, so that was a, a good, I think, a good use of time and helped, um, you know, with some emerging community leaders getting the word out about the committee and the work that's coming up. Um, alright, so I can't believe nobody else has mentioned the soccer team.
Oh, right. Do you want to throw it to them? No, no, go ahead.
Alright, alright, so congratulations to the boys, OA Boys Soccer Team who, uh, three-peated as D2 state champions um, the Saturday before Thanksgiving. The game, luckily the rain had cleared. It was quite cold and windy on the field. Um, but, uh, they persevered and won the game, um, in overtime. So it was really, really tremendous. So congratulations to the students, uh, the coaches and, and their families and friends because it was really, really quite a day. And I mean, gosh, to win a state championship and then do it two more times in a row is just unbelievable. And then some, um, other upcoming events, the Drama Club has their, uh, fall production, Twelve Angry Men, and that will be at 7:00 P.M. on this Friday, this Saturday and 2:00 P.M. on Sunday. Um, the multicultural club, my multicultural club is having, um, a holiday event on December 11th. And then, um, in addition to the OA concert, winter concert next week, 7th and 8th grade will have their winter concert on the 12th, which is Thursday night, so lots of good, fun stuff.
They usually do that on in January.
Yeah, it's, it's on the, I mean, unless I'm misspeaking, it's on the calendar.
Okay.
Are you, was it January? Maybe, is that, could that be what you're thinking?
No, it was moved at one point to the Changes in Music Stoppage last year. So it's moved back.
Back, alright, so I'm not, I'm not giving out.
I don't think so.
Okay, okay, alright, alright, great. Um, let's see.
Kelly, you doing?
I'm good, thank you.
You are?
You, it was covered some.
I did?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Okay, alright, alright, so with that then, um, I am going to make a motion to, well, I guess, alright, so we're not coming back from.
Right.
Uh, exec session. So our next meeting is Thursday, December 19th at 6:00 P.M. So again, all are welcome. And, uh, with that, I will make a motion to go into executive session, not to return, to open session, uh, pursuant to MGL, for purposes of pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, subsection 21A2, to conduct strategy session for preparation, in preparation for collective bargaining with the Easton Educators Association grievance hearing. And in my opinion, having this discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. So can I get a second?
Just a second.
Okay, and this we need to roll call vote, so.
So Luca, yes.
Star, yes?
You missed yet.
First there, yes?
Okay, alright, great, so we will adjourn to our exec session. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ella.